Educating, informing, serving. TV keeping government honest.
I'd like to call the special board meeting for Bellas Falls Union High School to order. Any adjustments to the agenda?
I don't have any.
Do you have any? Yeah, I don't have any. Communication and public comments. Do we have any communication, Lynn?
Um, allow me and no, not that I can see. Hands up or anything.
All right. So we are here tonight for new business. We need to approve the warnings for the town meeting and Lynn's going to put them up on our screen. And we've made the corrections that Nicole and I were aware of. Had some different towns, had different places where they vote now. And my um, my understanding on this is all of this is going to have to be voted on on Australian ballot it on this on the Tuesday. March 2nd. So this says, this first paragraph, I don't believe is right after reading all I've read today, that it says that when we are, so we are going to have a Zoom meeting on February 24th at seven and act on articles one through three and article six.
Um, Molly?
I didn't think we could do that, Jack.
Oh, you can't do that. I sent a note specifically pointing out that you can't do that. All binding articles have to be, all binding articles have to be done by Australian ballot. You can have a pre-town Zoom meeting on, but it is not a, but that should not be included as part of the warning.
Okay.
The pre-town Zoom meeting shouldn't be a part of the warning. Is that what you're saying, Jack?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So tell me how to change it and I'll do it right while we're looking at it.
All right. The legal voters, et cetera, are hereby warned to to vote, to, to vote on by Australian ballot on articles one through six, if that's what they are.
Nope, there's more than just six.
Okay. Well, how many there are?
I gotta change them.
Yeah, Australian spell it. There we go. You're fixing it. There we are.
Sorry.
I, I, I thought I sent this to you.
You did.
Okay. Um, so on, on or before Tuesday.
Tuesday, February 23rd?
Uh, no, sorry. Second.
Is that the right date?
Yeah.
Yep.
Particular time or no?
Uh,
The times are down there.
Uh,
Yeah, Rock, uh, they're all down there, 10 a.m. to 7 p.m.
Yeah.
You got it, Lynn. Just get rid of the rest of that.
Yeah, yeah. To, to act on the following articles.
And which are the articles?
There are this eight that are listed below.
All right.
One through eight.
Through eight.
Now, keep in mind, eight is to conduct any other business. So maybe that doesn't need to be there.
It still needs to be there by law.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does.
And you can't do it.
I disagree with that. All the articles have to be listed, whether we vote at the meeting or we vote by Australian ballot. They have to be there. That is false. They have to be there.
What does, what does me voting by paper ballot for conducting any other business, how does?
But because Chris, if I may speak, okay, all correct me when I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, which I tend to be sometimes, and I, that's totally fine. As far as I know, if it is all listed in all the teeth here, all the articles, it still has to be warned and it still all has to be there.
So time out for just a minute. Hold on. So if you let us finish, Colin, we're gonna take that, we're gonna take that article off.
Yeah, okay. You, you cannot have a bar articles to act on, act on items of that are, you know, you can't, you can't have a discussion item on your articles. These are Australian ballot. I've had this discussion endlessly and I'll tell you, you can call up Will Sanning.
Jack, I believe you, but the point being is at the annual meeting then, then what's the point of even?
There is no annual meeting. There is no annual meeting. And that's, that line has to be taken out.
Okay, forgive me. Like I said, I tend to be wrong.
There is no annual meeting.
Okay, because of COVID.
Right. Just say, warning, Union High School number 27.
That's fine.
You can put in BFUHS and parents and that'll tidy that up.
Okay.
Sorry, don't mean to be feisty.
No, no, I stand corrected. You are right. So it's fine. Why I like having these debates.
Yeah, act on articles one through six.
Now, if I may ask real quick, I've been out of the loop because of my new job, but anyway. So with the Zoom, is that, has the Secretary of State or any of the, the Vermont legislator, I mean, is this, obviously it's being accepted, but is this just, it's because of COVID? I guess what I'm trying to say is it has been accepted like through the legislature or just because of COVID?
I can respond to that with authoritative information, Madam Chair.
Yes, please. I could too, but you go ahead. You're very good at it.
Um, a bill called H48, all four pages of it was passed by the Senate and signed by the governor today. And it is specifically about how town meetings are to be handled during the COVID pandemic. And to cut straight to the chase, all municipalities, that includes boards like ours here at Bellas Falls Union High School, which is a municipality, have until the month of June to conduct their business. So we are not under any particular deadline in terms of when we adopt the high school budget. Obviously, the sooner we adopt a budget, maybe we've got a leg up on somebody's budget who comes later. But nonetheless, this board, under the law, which is Act 48, can wait until June to pass a budget. One advantage of that, of course, would be that we probably have a better idea on what our revenue picture looks like.
Um, I, Madam Chair.
Yes, Jack.
There are two, there are two laws. Well, one was, I believe, Act 60, I think it's 60 and Act 48, which was passed. As David says, just was it yesterday, David? It does allow you to postpone items if you want to have a town vote to discuss them. The issue that we have as a, as a school board, as opposed to a town municipality, is that we, because we have a a requirement to get a budget approved and, and, and dollars set by the state by June 30th, really means that you have to have that May is your drop dead date for any final action on a school, on, on school, on a school budget. And if you're worried that a budget might be appealed, really, it means that you're pushing it to April. You really don't have, as a practical matter, you really can't push it back to June because then you do what we did at the Union. Which is smash up every, every, every town's tax rate and you have, and, and you have all sorts of problems. We certainly do have it within our power to do that. The advisability of it, however, is another matter entirely.
Madam Chair, I'd like to speak to the practicality of the situation, if I may have the floor.
You can, and then I'm next.
Town of Brattleboro has a representative town meeting, which occurs in the month of June. And that includes their school meeting. And the reason that they do it in June is that by June, they have firm numbers from the state as to what their state aid to education is going to be. So Jack makes good points. But the reality of the situation is that the June meeting, and I'm not advocating for June, but that the June meeting has been practiced for many, many years in the school district immediately to our south.
Okay, so I'm going to try to really end here for a little bit. We, I want to work on what we're here for. And Lynn, are you still there?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, so we still don't have this,
Right.
this beginning paragraph cleaned up enough yet.
Exactly, so.
So we are warned to vote by Australian ballot on or before Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021, to act on the following articles, one through six.
Um, I think that should be seven, by the way.
Okay, one through seven. I can't see them, but I believe you.
The only reason I said six is because I think one was taken out.
Okay, you're right. It is six now. Sorry about that. I looked at a different example, but yeah.
So I think that the way it looks, um,
So after six, these other phrases, do we, we don't need to adjourn on?
No.
Right, that's right. You need to get rid of that.
Well, I think you can leave, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we need the part about the polls.
That's right. On which date the polls will be open. Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
So, so I think even on which date the polls, just the polls will be open at the places during the time stated below.
Right, now.
Get rid of on which date.
Right.
Okay, now, the polls will be open at the places during the time stated below.
Yeah, would put a period and say voters are advised that the polls will be open because we, that law that Dave referred to provides for absentee ballots. So people will be able to vote prior to March 2nd, which by the way, is kind of an issue. I got yelled at by the Westminster folks today.
So where do you want that put? Before the polls will be open?
Polls will be, just have, there, the way you have it right now is perfect and we'll just let it go. There, you may, Nicole, you may get a current email questioning some of, questioning that phrase, but I think that's the appropriate one. If I understand the folks over there, because they're still debating whether to have their town meeting in May or June, irrespective of this vote, but the polls will be open for this vote and for the, for the Union District vote. They may ask us to pay for it, but they'll be open.
So I wonder if it would be clear to say the polls will be open on March 2nd at the places and during the time stated below.
I think that's great. Because I don't know if they're, if they're collecting their ballots on elsewhere, on other times. I know that we just, we eliminated all this language and just put it at the times and place designated by those towns. Because I didn't know what it was and we couldn't figure out, Westminster was still debating what they wanted to do in terms of Westminster Town Hall. Oh, also, we don't need the asterisk on Westminster Town Hall, best I know.
Well, I think they put that there because it's different.
And is it, usually it's the Westminster Institute, but correct me if I'm wrong.
The problem with putting the asterisk is I was looking for the explanation somewhere below.
Okay, the re, I think there, you know, it's been at the institute for years and they were just trying to show people it was a different spot, but it's so close, they'll figure it out.
And Grafton may at the last moment switch to the fire station again, so we know that's a, but it'll be still fine. This is, this is what we know now and there shouldn't be an issue about it later.
So you've got at the places and during the time stated below. Do we need that end in there?
Uh, no.
All right, I see a hand up for Steve Fine.
Hi, Steve.
I, I would like to make a motion to table consideration of this warning. Until we get a better or more complete picture of exactly how this new statute, 48, is going to be operating. When I read that statute, it's pretty clear to me that one of the things the legislature did have in mind was the possibility that there would be, heaven forbid, actual meetings of these municipalities. Now, for all of the problems in terms of juxtaposing school board budgets with town budgets and so on and so forth, the legislature obviously had something in mind when it passed this statute. And I have to assume the governor had something in mind as well when he signed it. And I think it behooves us to take advantage of whatever the, the plans were, whatever the concept was, whatever the philosophy was that underlies this new legislation, that it behooves us to wait and see how that shakes out. Because the fact of the matter is, all of the things we're going through here to change the warning may not be necessary if in fact, we're going to have an actual meeting. If we don't have an actual meeting, and even in June, it comes down to the fact that we still need to have a Zoom meeting, then we'll have a Zoom meeting. But I think we're spending a lot of time fashioning the correct language in a warning for a Zoom meeting, when we may discover that down the line, the legislature really was looking to allow municipalities to undertake real town meetings or education meetings for that matter. And so I'm making that motion to table consideration of a warning at this point until we get a better picture of what is going to be happening under 48. That's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Lynn, can I have the screen back?
Yeah.
So we have a motion on the floor to table the articles that we are trying to get to Australian ballot on March 2nd. And I'm open for discussion. Chris Hodgson.
So, um, again, I want to emphasize, I have no familiarity at all with the law that was recently passed. But I do want to speak to some of the comments that Steve made, particularly around if the intention is to give municipalities the opportunity to have their usual in-person meetings. I'm going to say this, and I think most everybody here knows it, but I think it, it's important to say. When we've had for the last 10 or 15 years, the actual annual meeting of the high school, two things jump out at me. We've had next to no community participation. And I think it would be even worse now. So I would also say that historically, we've had at the most, a single article to vote on at the meeting. And quite honestly, to have that on Australian ballot, it actually gives the opportunity for better participation. Because with nobody there, there's no real input on that. And so, again, there may be other reasons to, to table this, but if this is the reason to table it, so that the high school annual meeting can happen in person, that just hasn't, I mean, we've had sometimes a hard time getting all of the board members to come to those meetings. So there may be other reasons to wait, but if that's one of the reasons, I don't know that there's a lot of justification there.
Well, but can I respond to that? The fact of the matter is, it seems to me, we very recently have had a long conversation about trying to do something with knowledge of what it's going to cost the taxpayers. And the fact of the matter is, what this Act 48 does is give us an opportunity with the legislature's blessing, to move this thing later down the road until we get a real picture of what the impact is going to be on the, on the taxpayers. The fact of the matter is, what I'm suggesting is we take advantage of a procedural statute in order to give ourselves time to get a real picture of what the finances are going to be on the taxpayers.
Yeah, Brian.
One of the reasons that I've been in nearly daily contact with Brad James and Flora and I have been in nearly daily contact with Brad James is to precisely get this kind of data. We haven't. What we have is that this, the state has agreed that they're going to have, there's a whole harmless clause in terms of population this year, according to Brad. That means that your average daily membership that you have this year will be, unless your number is larger, the same as it was last year. The formula for calculating support is right now the same. That's what it is. The, the, everything that we have in effect, a freeze. Now, could the legislature change it between now and June? God knows they've done it in the past. But you won't have a, but the delay will not help. The reality is, if you already have your K through eight budgets, I don't, maybe Rockingham's changed it, but certainly the K through eight budget for, for Westminster, Athens and Grafton is set. The vote for the, for March 2nd is set. The town meeting for Grafton is set. I believe the town meeting date for Athens is set. So what we already have here is a largely locked in date. We have largely locked in numbers. If there was a benefit to delaying, it would have been identified in the discussions that we've had. I haven't seen evidence of it. And I just respectfully suggest, there is no real benefit except irritating our town clerks for delaying matters. So that's where I would stand on it. You know, if, if people want to delay it just because, fine. But the reality is that the, what we have for an obligation is to hold this vote. We can hold it for whenever we want, but there will be other, but other people will be voting on other things. And we can have a information meeting because in fact, that's required of us. But it was required last year and we didn't really do it. So that's where we're at. We hold an information meeting online, much the way Grafton does every year. And we'll be doing this year. We're going to have an information meeting for the, for the unified district. That's how you do it. We'll do it in Feb, we're going to do ours in February. Presumably, you could do the same thing on that February 27th date that you've identified, have an informational meeting and you're good. And, and that's what I would suggest.
David Clark.
Thank you, Molly. Took me a moment to unmute. I would like to point out one or two things. Number one, Bellas Falls Union High School Board is an independent municipality. What we do in no way impacts the other municipalities apart from the situation around the convenience of voting multiple budgets on the same day. Number two, I think a very good reason to sustain the table is quite bluntly, I think we need to run this warning past council and make sure that in fact, it is correct. We are depending upon the opinion of laypersons here who are not lawyers and who are interpreting information they have received from the Secretary of State. And interpretations are always subject to error. Thirdly, I want to just raise the question that Allison Bigwood has resigned as the clerk of Town of Westminster, moved to Rockingham. I'm not certain that that impacts her status as high school clerk. Nonetheless, that would be one of those items that could be verified if we do go ahead and table tonight because that very much would impact, I believe, the warning. Thank you, Molly.
Anyone else got any suggestions, comments? So right now, there is a motion on the floor to table the warnings. And I guess we want to play it out and see what happens. I get, I totally understand what David is saying, but I don't believe we're going to put anything out into the papers tomorrow before we have someone look at it and tell us it's written right. I, I think that we are, we have everything in place. We've worked hard to, you know, to get the budget taken care of and everything is here is very, you know, we're not, we're not making any real strong changes anywhere. I don't, I guess I don't see the benefit in waiting. I, this is something that is scheduled. People look for it. People are going to come out and be, you know, more apt to participate because it's something that they do every year at the same time. And I don't know why to wait. I, I've heard everybody, I read that H48 twice today, which is very uncommon for me because usually I don't have five minutes to do that, but I made a point too because it was interesting what it was because of what we had to do tonight. And everything everybody said is, is the truth. We can wait. But we also can take care of it. We can have a Zoom meeting on February 24th, a very informational meeting. We can all sit, we can, the community is invited if they have any questions. You know, maybe, maybe Chris will be surprised because at Zoom, they seem to show up better. Maybe we'll have 100 people. But I've been to most of those meetings that Chris has talked about and nobody comes. So I don't know why we're waiting to, to have a meeting because we're not really cutting anybody short. Nobody comes to them. So I, I do think, I'm not in favor of waiting, but I'll go through one more time. If anybody doesn't have any more comments, we'll go for a vote. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have something else.
Go for it.
I think that it has to be emphasized that the purpose of my motion is not so we'll have a meeting and hope everybody comes. The purpose of the motion is to take advantage of a procedure that the legislature has established. So we can determine for ourselves what in fact, is going to be the impact of a budget on the taxpayers. And it really has nothing to do with the mechanics of an actual town meeting. It has to do with that kind of a determination. What is this going to cost the taxpayers? And we ain't got that information at the moment. That's all.
So Steve, I just want to get it straight. You have made a motion to table the warning.
Table consideration of the warning until such time as we have a better picture of what's happening with Act 48 or H48.
So I have table consideration of the warning until we have a better picture of H48.
Correct, that'll be fine.
And that was seconded by Colin. And if there's no more comments, let's, Priscilla, go ahead.
I have just one question. Does that mean that we are not going to discuss the articles tonight? Or are we going to go ahead and discuss the articles and make a decision on those so that we have them ready in case we do want to proceed?
The language is to table discussion, so that kills it. That, that means we can't do anything, Priscilla.
Thank you. I'm sorry I joined late because of my meeting.
Depending on where this motion goes, we either go back and look at the articles again and prove them or it's done. Um, so I'm going to make a roll call. All the- All those in favor of tabling consideration of the warning until we have a better picture of H forty-eight. Margot?
No.
Colin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jack?
Oh, God, no.
David?
Yes.
Priscilla?
No.
Okay, Molly.
And I'm a no. It is four to three. The motion, it did not get tabled. And I would like to go back to approving the warnings for the town meeting. Lynn, can we have it back up? Thank you. You're trying to adjust that for my eyes? Okay, I think we've gotten down to, let's look at the first article. So in this article, Jack, maybe you can help me. But because it's going into Australian ballot, are we putting a name there?
No, the way that it will have to be done is these positions will have to be run for just the way any other opposition.
So it'll be listed at the bottom of the vote to vote on?
And this is fine, but that's, you know, the only question I have is, is the one-year term for these in July? I guess it is. So, fine.
Okay.
I have a question about people running, like, if they want to get their name on the ballot, do they have to get, I wasn't paying attention prior to this. Do they have to get on the signatures to get on the ballot? Or is that waived for this year?
That is waived for this year. It's the prior bill that was passed during the beginning of the COVID epidemic that we used for the unified district. Is all you have to do to run for any of these positions is to notify your town clerk of your interest. And they have you sign a document that's called a candidate of, something candidate of interest. I've actually got a copy of it that I'll send to anybody that wants it. And so then those names will be listed. And it'll be part of the ballot, because this is not the ballot. This is a warning.
What is, you know, what is the date that people need to have that interest expressed by?
I believe that it is by the end of this month. But you can check with your town clerk. But we advise people for the unified district to get their stuff in on the twenty-third. I see Priscilla's hands up here.
Kathleen told me the twenty-fifth.
So, and my last question about this is, do we have to somehow put a public notice or something that positions are available? Do we have to warn that in any way? Or I just don't know what the legality is.
We don't have to warn the positions. The positions are through, correct me if I'm wrong, interest. And you call each town hall, and you look at the term limits on each of us and other boards. And I believe you expressed an interest. As a board, we don't advertise that.
I think that the, I see David's hand up on this, and he's going to raise, actually, a fairly valid objection, I'm going to guess. Go ahead, David.
I'd like to seek recognition from the chair.
Thanks, David. I couldn't see you, so it's okay.
All right. This is my consent of candidate form from the Westminster Town Clerk. And the deadline is June twenty-fifth. That's Westminster, but I presume that applies to all towns in the state of Vermont.
No, thank you. So the only article that, you know, I look at these apples, and Article Four is the most important article to make sure we've got it written correctly. So I'm going to look to Flora and Chris Hodgson to tell me it's right.
Well, I can tell you that the seven million, five hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and twelve cents is what the board passed at the last meeting. So I'll give you a thumbs up on that one. The rest of these, I have not been involved in the calculations thereof.
Okay. Flora, you're good?
Yes, I did review those ones this morning for Nicole.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure. I don't want to, you know, make a mistake in the paper. You know how it is. Okay, so.
I had a question about the last statement in parentheses. Because this whole thing is being done by Australian ballot, do we have to announce that that article is by Australian ballot? Or can we, because the whole thing is?
Everything from the friends out needs to be eliminated.
You're right. Thank you, Margot.
I actually have a question for Flora. Because I haven't spent as much time with the high school one as with the union district. For that hold harmless thing that Brad was talking about, does that apply here? Because this would indicate that the spending per equalized pupil is higher than spending for the current year. Remind me of the budget from last year or for this current year?
That's seven million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-one.
Well, it wouldn't be seven million. It might be seventeen, but it's not going to be seven.
You're talking about for the high school?
Yeah.
Okay, well, hold on just a second. Yeah, so how much was it this year again?
Seven million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-one.
Okay, this is what's confusing me. And I'm going to ask for your indulgence here. If we have a hold harmless on ADMs, on equalized pupil, so that the equalized pupil count is the same as it is this current year, how do we get a number that's four percent higher when our budget is lower and the ADM is the same?
The number he gave us was, before he gave the ADM this morning, we had the number as three seventy-seven, four point ninety.
Yeah.
From that amount, we have fourteen students that are part of special ed, which brings the number down to three sixty-three point ninety. According to the budget and the expenditures not included and everything else that we had as for surplus, that is what gave us the number.
Okay, so the hold harmless is only for regular students. It doesn't include the special ed stuff. That's what it boils out to. Okay. Thought I checked.
Are we good with that article?
I pray so.
Will you scroll up a little bit more, Lynn, so everybody can keep reading it? So Article Four, we're good with. Article Five?
I had a question regarding this. And it's not so much about this article, but whether or not we need another article. So this is only part of the surplus?
Yeah.
You know, approximately a hundred and fifty thousand we're proposing to roll, you know, into next year. Do we need to have a separate article?
No. If you don't do anything with your surplus, it rolls over. So by doing something with this amount of it, the rest of it rolls over into revenue. If you didn't do this, two hundred and two thousand would go into revenue, which I would recommend against, and I could talk to that if you wonder about that. But if you have an excessive amount, a really, really large amount one year from the surplus going into revenue, and the next year you just break even, you've essentially lost two hundred thousand worth of revenue. And it really, it kind of muddies, it makes, and it's not necessarily a good way to do that with this going up and down like that all the time. Hundred fifty thousand is a lot, but we're in kind of a unique situation here, so.
I would like to move that we strike Article Five. And I would like to speak to my motion. We already know that based on what projections we do have about revenues that the homeowner, the taxpayer is looking at a nine percent hit on their tax bill. And that may not be a lot of money to some of us, but there are some of us to whom that's an awful lot of money. And I think it would be a fool's game not to apply the entire surplus to tax reduction. And as much as I think that the high school has been very responsible in building and maintaining its reserve funds, I think that this is not the year to put money into reserves. I think this is the money to use it to reduce the impact on the taxpayers, which I think is going to be quite severe. So my motion, Molly, is to strike Article Five.
Oh, wait, may I second that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any suggestions? Margot?
So what is our current, approximately, what is our current capital fund at?
I know it's at least about seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
And I'm just going by the last two years that we've set aside. So it's in that range.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't disagree with what David has said, but I am going to say that I don't agree, that I believe that we, our administration has done a great job at controlling things. And property tax, they keep throwing that nine percent increase at us. And, you know, maybe they'll get there. And yes, it's hard for anybody to pay those kind of bills. But what we're trying to do here is make sure our future is solid also. And we're not going to do anything about it this year because of how crazy the year has been. We still have a parking lot that is an absolute mess, that has some real drainage problems and needs to get fixed. And we have been working hard at trying to make sure that we were going to be prepared to try to get that job done. We have bumped it now for two years. We are going to have to, you know, do some repairs, take care of some damage, take care of some drainage that isn't working. That's the big-ticket item that is always kind of in the back of my mind when I think about the high school, because, you know, I think at the end of the day that, you know, maybe we think it needs a paint job or something, but the school is in pretty decent shape. You know, we've taken care of our air handlers, and our kitchen is getting up to speed. We have a big-ticket item that really needs some attention. And we can bust it all up and have a dirt parking lot if that's what everybody wants. But I'm pretty sure that that's not where we are in two thousand twenty-one. That's just not the smart thing to do. So I think by putting a hundred and fifty back into the revenue and putting fifty-two thousand dollars into, you know, that fund is just, the capital improvement fund is so important for our school. And, you know, we may not have any money to put into our capital improvements for the next three years. Who knows? So I don't think it's a bad figure to keep a little bit of that to make sure that we can do things that we need to do to keep our school where it needs to be. It's a maintenance item, really. Anyone else? I can't see the screen.
I would like to just make a couple of comments.
Go ahead, Chris.
So two things that I would say, and I noted this in an email, but obviously emails don't necessarily get to everybody. But a hundred and fifty thousand is two percent of the budget, which is, that coupled with the budget being down by about two percent, I think really does attend to, and it's always nice to be able to do more, but I think it attends well to taxpayers in this unique situation. This is a rather uniquely down and uniquely funded budget. It's uniquely down by being down by two percent, and it's uniquely funded in that there's a good two percent of the budget to roll over, which I think will make a difference. But the other thing, and probably even more important than that, is by leaving this article where it is, you actually let the taxpayers decide what they're going to do. And then you just have to make a good argument to the taxpayers. Because if it gets voted down, that fifty-two thousand dollars is going to go back into revenue. And so if you leave it there, instead of just six taxpayers deciding what to do, you get all the taxpayers deciding what to do with that fifty-two thousand, which I think is a good thing.
Good point. The only sad part is that the way things are written and expressed, if you're just reading the warnings, you're not getting the picture.
All right, yeah.
That's the only downside.
We'll have an information meeting, though. We will have, before this all happens, we will have, and hopefully we get people that ask about it. Nathan?
Let's hand it up, Molly.
Thank you, Molly. I want to just raise a theoretical question here. What if the budget is defeated and the reserve fund is approved? What happens then?
I would think if the budget doesn't get approved, then that article doesn't get approved either.
Well, Molly, I differ with you, because the reserve fund is not part of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget. It is surplus from fiscal year two thousand twenty. You would be allocating fiscal year two thousand twenty monies at a time when you would not be approving a fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget. I'm not, I understand that there are people here who feel very strongly that it's important to continue to fund the reserve funds. But I simply want to point out that there is a peril in doing so, because if you see your budget defeated, that means almost certainly budget cuts. And that fifty-two thousand dollars is a lot of money when you're looking at a budget that's going to get cut.
Nathan? I mean, sorry, Jack?
Mr. Clark is actually correct. It is, essentially, it's assigning money to a special fund. It's the extra budget item, and approval of it is an extra budget approval. That he is completely correct in his comment here. I'm somebody that believes very strongly in having sinking funds, because otherwise you're borrowing money and paying banks to do the work that they're doing anyway. But in this particular case, there's a real kind of oddball situation that there is possibility the budget could get defeated. I don't think it will, because it's not, because, one, I think the nine percent figure that's being thrown around looks like it's no longer operable based on the Joint Fiscal Office's newest estimates, which look like we're getting a sales tax recovery. And, two, I still think that it's important to realize that probably in the next two years, interest rates are going to take a substantial jump, which, again, argues for having a sinking fund. But the reality is that we have high unemployment right now and fiscal panic. And probably this might be that rainy day fun year where it's raining, and you might want to give the taxpayers a my back.
Priscilla? I haven't heard from you yet.
I'm just looking back at the previous article, and I get the risk of not being, talking about this one. But when we're putting in four point four percent higher than spending, do we have to put in that four point four percent higher? Is that a requirement?
It's a requirement.
Because we've actually decreased the budget, but is that required? You're shaking your head here. Well, I guess it is. Because it's going to be hard to explain to them that, yes, we're down two percent, and we're going to put in another two percent. And I thought that if we didn't put in And I thought that if we didn't put an article in there like Margot is saying, we didn't have to, we had, didn't put an article, uh, article in there, just assign that under a hundred and fifty thousand, that it had to go back to the taxpayers and be refunded to them. And I don't know where that comes from, but that had been my understanding.
Yeah, that, that's true. The hundred and fifty thousand, there is a hundred and fifty thousand of surplus that rolls back into the revenue side. And there really isn't any place on this article to say that or show that, but that is what.
But doesn't it have to be returned to them? I thought you had.
When you say returned to them, it's returns to them because it becomes part of the revenue of the next budget, and it offsets the education spending for that next budget. So it's not like we write a check to them, it's just, it's less money they have to give us.
Translating, Molly, with your permission.
Sure.
When, when, when Chris is talking about revenue, what he's talking about is money off the top of that bottom line, so that we're saying that this amount will be, uh, will, will be four percent higher. But that doesn't mean that the tax, that the tax bill will be four percent higher. Uh, as, as David argues, if we don't get enough money in the, uh, in the contingency fu, state contingency fund, we could be nine percent higher without batting an eye. But this is money that we have that will directly go to lowering taxes, which is the reason why I'm in the unusual position of agreeing with David and with Steve. He hasn't spoken yet, but I bet he's agreeing with us, that this is where we ought to put the money.
Priscilla?
And this is gonna sound dumb, but I can sound dumb tonight, it's okay. Um, but if it rolls over, Chris, this is probably for you to answer, so I'm saying that if it rolls over, doesn't it roll over into this tax year rather than next tax?
No, it goes into, it like skips the budget every time it happens. So it's from the last budget that you closed to the next budget you're working on. And then there's this budget in between that already has its revenue defined.
Okay.
It always happens kind of skipping a budget.
Okay.
Okay, are we ready for the question? There is a motion on the floor to strike Article Five. All those in favor, Margot?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Steve?
Oh.
Jack?
Allegedly, yes.
David?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yeah, I guess yes. Hate to.
Article Five is straight. Lynn, can I have Article Seven, please?
Do you have an Article Seven?
I mean Article Six.
There you go.
Okay, what am I gonna say about this one? It was brought to my attention that the treasurer got paid more from the high school than from other boards. I don't know how that came about, but.
Rockingham is four hundred. Has been.
Does anybody want to make any changes to this article? Anybody want to make a motion to accept this article? Or do we just accept it the way it's written? Maybe we don't even need a motion, we're not gonna change it. I can't see anybody.
If we need a motion, I will make a motion to pass that article.
Can I?
Hold on.
I don't know that, I mean, you haven't been making motions on individual articles.
Yeah, I know, I, I worded that wrong. I was gonna tell him that.
Okay.
So if nobody wants to change it, then we're just, then we're just happy the way it's written.
Okay.
Okay. Lynn, have we covered all the articles?
That's all that I have. I'm gonna make it small again, so you could see the, um, the five articles there. And then, um, this statement, but we need to look this one over again. Because it says, "For the purpose of explaining, um, are further warned that a public informational hearing will be held via Zoom, February twenty-fourth, uh, for the purpose of explaining four and five." Well, we got rid of five, and we have a new five. Do we need to explain the new five?
Well, shouldn't we say explaining all articles?
All articles, yes.
The articles would be the right phrase there. And, yeah, there you go. And again, the articles, not just Article Four on this last.
Um, Nicole asked me to mention to you that she called today to verify, and Allison is still the clerk, but she'll double check again tomorrow. But she called, and I'll tell you who she called. Uh, contacted Pauline at the town hall, uh, to confirm it was still Allison. She's gonna confirm with Allison as well, just to be positive.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One, Ms. Bigwood moved to Bellas Falls, town in our district. And two, she would have to resign, and we would have to accept resignation and designate someone, none of which we have done, so for the purposes of today, she is the clerk of the board.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the rest of this is fine. The, the only signatories, uh, and there needs to be a signatory lines on this when we send it, should be the members. I don't know if we have required members to sign, uh, the way some other boards have. Uh, I was curious about that. Do we normally send this around for signatures, Lynn?
Not that I'm aware of, because this was what Sue, um, the template Sue gave Nicole.
Priscilla and Margot have their hands up on that.
Yeah. Go ahead, Priscilla.
Um, going back to the, the article before that, um, you need to specify that it's, you know, the district clerk there in, in Article, whatever number it is now, five, is it now five?
That's right, it's all.
Because otherwise, I'm clerk of the high school one, and that gets confusing, so we don't want that confused, because Allison's the one that gets that.
Madam Chair should say the same down below.
Okay. So Lynn, down below, we need to fix it also? Right there, yeah.
It's clerk of the district, not clerk of the board.
Right.
Clerk of the district.
Right, of the district.
Lynn, would you be able to scroll all the way up to the top? I think we need to modify, yeah, where it says act on the following articles, one through, it's now five.
Thank you, yeah, and my computer has its own mind. But thank you, so, um. And there's no way we can put a qualifier in this seven million saying, you know, compared to last year or less than last year's budget of when we talk about the four point four? We, we can't put a qualifier in there?
Um, it seems to me that how that's worded is fairly specific, but I can't say whether or not you can. I just, I think that's where the, the meeting happens and the conversation happens, but.
Okay, great.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Jack?
Yeah, sorry, sorry to monopolize this. The, uh, the, the, uh, chair often writes a report on these, uh, on, on these, in the pamphlet that goes with this material. And, uh, when the chair has, and often they'll say that this is a, this compares to the dollar amount we spent last year, and do all that stuff, and say despite that, because of the state calculus for formulating these, it results in this other number. Uh, I've done that for a number of years, and I would encourage our chair to do that here, um, and offer to help if that's a thing. Mr. Hand up.
Yes, David?
Well, I want to actually, uh, mea culpa. Many of the board reports that I wrote when I was chair were ghosted by Jack Brier, so he's absolutely correct in what he says. But I do want to raise one last item on the warning, and that is in fact the last item in the warning, which indicates a vacant seat. I believe that would be appropriate to note the fact that the vacant seat is in Westminster. All the way to the bottom, Lynn.
Thanks, David, yeah, I saw, I saw it now. So would you like me to say Rockingham, I mean Westminster, uh, down here?
It is a vacant Westminster seat, Lynn.
Okay, so should I put, should I put it here, Westminster, or here Westminster, beside vacant position?
I would. Vacant position Westminster, and then maybe open.
Comma, twenty twenty-one?
And then open, or? No, that's fine, vacant, yeah.
I think it reads clear the way it is.
Yeah, so to be clear, just, oh, never mind, I'm reading it wrong, okay, never mind.
I would like to, like to speak to my comment here, and that is you want to be very careful about the year that is down there. Westminster, um, elects reps for three years to the Union High School Board, and this seat went vacant last year, so I'm not entirely certain to put in the twenty twenty-one date.
I, I bet it's probably better just to leave the date out.
Would it be appropriate where the date is to put open, or just leave vacant position Westminster?
I guess I would leave it vacant position Westminster, and if someone's interested, they can contact the town clerk and find out the real, like, what the remaining term is.
Okay, that makes sense.
I don't see anybody, but I think I hear somebody.
Madam Chair, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you know it's twenty twenty-three. Uh, if you go back and look at the sig, uh, at the, at the signatures down there, if you don't mind, Lynn. Okay, you've got, roll down there again, all the way down. Okay, you go to Westminster twenty twenty-two, you go to Westminster twenty twenty-one. This is the vacant position for Westminster twenty twenty-three. If somebody's gonna run for this position, they ought to know how long, what length of sentence they're in for.
Is that, Molly, is that, should I put it? What do you think?
Yeah, it's fine.
Molly, I disagree on that, because you've got David Clark, Westminster twenty twenty-one, his is up at that point. What you're doing in a vacant position is simply telling people when it is up. It is up twenty twenty-one, and it is to be, um, someone is to go in and, and apply for that position at this time. If you put twenty twenty-three, they're gonna think that it's not open until twenty twenty-three.
These are for ends of terms, it's not for beginnings of terms.
Whatever.
No, no, I'm sorry, Priscilla, I'm just, I, I'm, I apologize for talking too much tonight, but I just want to clarify this stuff.
Okay, I think we have passed this out. If everybody's okay, then we're gonna move on to our next item. Can I have my screen back, Lynn?
Sure.
We have to take a vote and approve the whole thing?
I think you do.
Yeah, we, we should, that was. So now that we have them written, there has to be a motion to approve the warnings for the town meeting as written.
Don't move.
Margot will second.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor, and seconded to approve the warnings for the town meeting for the Bellas Falls Union High School, is there any more discussion? Okay, so let's do a roll call.
Molly, can I see the first part of the thing? Because mine, I'm looking at the original and I can't envision it now.
Can you put it up? Put it right up here for us.
Thank you.
Would you like a moment before we vote?
Okay, you just took it all out, thank you.
Okay. All right, so motion on the floor, and seconded to approve the warning articles as written, Margot?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Steve?
Well, consistent with my position that we should be waiting until we have better information on what the impact will be on the taxpayers, I'm gonna vote no.
Thank you, Jack?
Uh, yes.
David?
I also vote no.
Priscilla?
Yes.
The motion has passed. We are gonna move on to unfinished business for discussion. We don't have any reason to go into executive session. I really just ask for this to go on because we have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-fifth. And I hope that everyone has been sent a little questionnaire on superintendent evaluation, and maybe we, you can look it over, um, kind of have, be ahead of the game on, if you have any questions on it before we get there. We need to have that filled out and back to our chair of the SU by, we, I think we said the twenty-ninth, so today just gives you a couple extra days to look at that. If you don't have that, that was sent a long time ago, and you email one of us, one of the chairs, we can get it sent to you. But it's just something we need to just look at, um, and I just wanted everybody to kind of have it in the back of their head. Is there any comments or questions, or you can email us if you don't have it?
Madam Chair, Collins goes hand up.
Yes.
Molly, if, thank you. Uh, Molly, if you could email that to me, for some reason, I don't think I ever got one. I mean, I can double check, but if you could just drop me an email, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
David?
Thank you, Molly. I want to point out that, um, this survey is what's known as a three sixty survey. There will be some items on it which board members will feel, um, are irrelevant to a, uh, board member's, uh, assessment of the superintendent of schools. And there is a, uh, number six, which indicates doesn't apply. So, um, you're not expected to fill them all out if you feel that there are questions that don't apply.
Thank you.
Molly, I don't know if I ever got, got the finished one either.
Okay, why don't I just tell everybody that we will send it to you? All right, anything else? Director's comments, Margot?
I think I'm good at this point, thank you.
Colin?
I'm all set, thank you.
Steve?
All set.
Jack?
Dotting eyes and crossing keys are kind of an obsession of mine. I'm sorry for jumping in so much tonight, but I, there are a lot of eyes and and crossing and dotting, so thank you, everyone.
David?
I always enjoy working with this board, even when we disagree.
Priscilla?
Yes, thank you, and everybody stay safe and well. We are going to get there.
So I wanna thank everybody for, um, you know, getting through this. This is something that's a little different than what we've been doing in the past, and, um, you know, I, I really appreciate everybody's, you know, getting involved. This is, this has been a good meeting there. You know, sometimes we agree to disagree, but it, it's got some good points out there. Margot, do you have your hand up?
Just wanna clarify the next meeting dates. Um, so I think, I don't have my calendar right in front of me, but are we still having the meeting?
Well, we have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-fifth, which is Monday. We had to have this meeting, because it was very important to get those articles, uh, published. And so that's why we had a meeting. We couldn't have a meeting yesterday, because it was a holiday, so we had our meeting, we had a meeting, we had an extra meeting this month. Makes up for the one that I missed when I was in Old Orchard Beach.
So we have the twenty-fifth, and then we will also have the informational meeting on the twenty-seventh?
Um, the informational meeting for these articles for the public.
Oh, that's February, sorry, wrong month. I'm just squishing it all together.
That's okay.
Praying for spring.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.